And twenty-four, I'll hand it over to Dr. Chris E.
Well, thank you. We organized this meeting the board had and so that you would have a chance as a board to have an open discussion about the quite significant facility presentation you had two weeks ago. Scott Winn and Andy Clayman, respectfully principals of the middle school and high school and thus quite significant to the whole Farragut complex redesign, they've been active in that process. We thought it'd be very helpful for them to share with you as a board their insights, responses, reflections to what so far has been presented. And they've actually immediately brought incredible clarity to all the material you had seen earlier. So we want to let them step up. They're going to tag team between the two of them. We have a hard stop for them at six forty-five just so they can move on and be ready for an early morning with all of our incredible students. So without further ado, why don't you step up? And while they're going to the mic, let me review for the board the timeline. In the last meeting, we had posted, and it's up here again for the record, this bond overview document. It's in there in the public record. It's a very detailed listing as to where we are, where we're going, and what has to happen by May. To review today is October twenty-second. Two weeks ago, as I've said, you had the Farragut complex concepts. On the sixth, your next meeting, you will have the athletic field concepts presented to you. And there's all kinds of other detail here which we can come back to if you want. Why don't we let Scott and Andy get started? Excuse me, Mr. Winn, Mr. Clayman, might suggest you hold questions and then get in a discussion with them because I know they like to discuss. So there you go.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We know you had a really exciting presentation at the last meeting, and we wanted to come tonight and try to put a little bit of a personal context to it, try to help you understand what this actually looks like for the middle school and the high school, for our students, for our staff, and for the community as a whole. So the chart that we prepared, which you can see up there, and I know you have it in front of you, is really just a summary of what we tried to take as what are the big impacts that are happening based upon the four major elements of the bond. So we have the addition of a new cafeteria, the new entryway, we have the Washington, the potential Washington addition, and then the internal renovations that could occur. So down the left-hand side in yellow, you can see these are the major categories of impact that we have kind of identified. And we'll talk about each one of them, both from the middle school and high school perspective. And I think what was really great is as Andy and I were talking about this and preparing, we were originally going to present it as middle school impacts and high school impacts. And as we talked, we realized that they're pretty much mostly the same. So we combined them together and we'll talk through them from both perspectives. When there are some little differences here and there, we will make sure that we highlight them. But I would say the first one, and I will, I will talk about that, is the additional instructional space that we'll be able to gain. You know, when we talk about this bond, we're looking at between the new cafeteria, that in itself is a brand-new instructional space that we can use. But in addition to doing that, that creates five to six new classrooms in the current space, which is held by the cafeteria that exists now. One nice thing about that, the placement of the current cafeteria is really problematic. It being on the third floor of the building, stuck in the middle of the building, doesn't really promote a great, great space. And this new addition definitely does. We see the addition of a community room, something that we could really use in terms of swing space, in terms of, you know, small group instruction space, the addition of a chorus room. We have a beautiful music suite, but we add on that one other piece, it satisfies really many more needs for our music department. Small group instructional space across the board is really truly needed. The new wing adds additional classroom space, again, small group instructional space, but it also adds some swing space. Right now, we have nowhere to go. We're like landlocked. So if we want to do something exciting where we want to break up a class and have part of it go somewhere, there's nowhere to go. And it prevents our teachers from really doing some of the exciting things that we would love to see them be able to do. Just from a square footage perspective, you know, we've got classrooms that are apparent, close to five hundred square feet. The new constructed square feet is recommended at over seven hundred square feet. That additional space is tremendous in terms of being allowing teachers to do those authentic learning experiences. And in addition, being able to add all this room, this is where we're going to be able to talk about adding new programming. I presented in our, in the state of the middle school and the kind of future planning of the middle school, things like, you know, adding in coding and a programming, you know, program. All of that isn't really possible right now. There's nowhere to put it. So being able to add all of that additional space really will allow us to do the instructional things that we want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Winn. Show of hands, who has gotten lost in this building? One thing that was really eye-opening when we looked at the plans that the architects put together was an opportunity to look at how the building has evolved over the course of its time. And it's really kind of scattershot, right? There was, there was one building in, I think, nineteen twenty-one and then-
Nineteen oh-two.
Nineteen oh-two.
Original.
Dating yourself, Alex.
No, no.
I was here.
I was here.
A separate building in the twenties, and then they weren't connected. And then they, so the building was not designed to flow smoothly. And obviously, for anyone who's not accustomed to the building, for, for new, for families making their way through, for freshmen making their way in, for sixth, for fifth graders making their way in, for new staff, and after a month, you get the lay of the land, right? But that doesn't mean that the, that the flow of one program to the next works smoothly. It just means that you've come to get used to the lay of the land as it stands. And so this is really an opportunity to take the existing structures that we have, add the cafeteria and the additional wing, and design programming and design the flow of the building in a way that really makes coherent sense, to make sure that departments are next to each other so that they can cross-pollinate and collaborate on ideas, to make sure that when students are going from one end of the building to the other, they don't need to go through kind of a circuitous route and up and down staircases in order to make their way there. So the, this will allow for reworking of the placements of departments and different grade levels to make sure that that is intentional and coherent and makes sense. The new entryway is a huge, when you're walking up to the building, you quite literally don't know where to enter, right? And what that, the lost opportunity there of welcome to Hastings, the Hastings campus is, it's, it's significant. And so the new entryway that allows for increased safety and security as part of the singular entrance, but also for a sense of community and, and kind of pride in this is our, this is, this is our main entryway. The, I spoke to the kind of the circular movement of students and how being able to really coherently and cohesively design the flow of the building will just kind of enhance that. And I know that Scott in the middle school is very tight on space, just jumping ahead to your next talking point. But I think the last piece there, I guess your department office for the middle school.
Yeah, just from a, from a programmatic standpoint, it's really important to note that, you know, doing this will allow for increased collaboration between teachers. And that is really truly where the instructional improvements are going to be able to come together. Right now, the high school has office space that allows teachers, departments to come together. It doesn't exist in the middle school. So right now, it's kind of like being able to catch people as they're, you know, running from room to room because many teachers in the building are not in one singular classroom. So it's trying to be able to create spaces for teachers to come together and collaborate and to improve instruction. The hallways. So spend time in the middle school, and you will come to learn that being in the hallways in between periods is a, is a dangerous place to be. We are chock-full. And, you know, not only is it because of enrollment, but from a, from a design standpoint, there are issues with the way that the building is designed. We have hallways that are a little wider, and then we have some hallways that are extremely narrow. And part of that is due to the fact that we have lockers that protrude into the hallways, and in some of the hallways are on both sides of the hallways. So if you put lockers on both sides and then put students at those lockers on both sides, and don't forget, they're up and down, so there's two students for every single locker bank, you, you end up with a very small amount of space that would exist in order to pass actually down the hallway. So when we talk about this, when we talk about the placement of classrooms, the locker placement, and this design actually pulls many of those lockers out of the hallways and puts them in other locations throughout the building that creates kind of like locker banks, where students can go, get their belongings, and then transit through the hallways in a much, much more efficient way. That is one hundred percent going to increase the safety, security of our students. It's going to create a much more viable transit plan for students through the building. And I think when we pair the changes to the hallways with the placement of the classrooms, with the expansion of space, you create a much more welcoming and open environment. Do you want to talk about the alcoves for the high school?
Let's do that.
Oh, do it later.
Yeah, with the communal spaces.
Okay. From an accessibility standpoint, you know, if you talk about the, the main entrance of the middle school right now, yes, there is a ramp, but once you get to that bottom floor, there is no way out of that bottom floor. So it creates an element that does not really welcome all people into our building. So we really are looking to be able to create a more welcoming environment and accessible environment, a place where people feel that they can come and that they can go through the building in a very cohesive and very welcoming kind of manner.
As it currently stands, the high school entrance is not accessible for anybody with limited mobility. And so if you're a high school student with limited mobility, even temporary limited mobility, like some of our football players who are on crutches right now, then you got to go all the way around. And, and that's, that's for temporary limited mobility. For anybody with more permanent limited mobility that doesn't feel like they are as much a part of the high school community by virtue of having a separate entrance. In terms of flexible spaces to meet diverse learning needs, we currently do not have a testing center. And what a testing center would offer us, we firmly, firmly believe that, to students with IEPs, that they should have every access to every course that we offer. As it currently stands, if we have a student who has an IEP who's in AP literature, and that IEP states that they get extended time on their, on their exams, and they're, they're taking a test in the class, where do they go? We don't have a place for them to go, as it currently stands. And so we do the best we can. We cobble it together. We find open rooms. We, we find, whether it's another teacher to cover it or they do it in their resource room, we, we make it work. But as we are continuing to push for more inclusivity and a higher level of participation in the higher level of courses for our diverse learners, having more flexible spaces, the, I mean, the, the testing center, I think, is the biggest, most attractive piece for the, for the high school as it relates to this. But I think blurring between the flexible space and the communal learning spaces, if you walk down our hallways on any given day, you will see students doing work in the hallway. Who do work in the hallway because the, they're in a small group and maybe it's a little bit loud in the classroom because there's six different small groups going on in the classroom. And this plan creates alternative, smaller, flexible spaces that allow for more innovative teaching and the type of collaborative group work that a kind of traditional classroom, especially a smaller traditional classroom that is at capacity with twenty-seven students, who at the high school level, that's twenty-seven larger bodies, and large voices and, you know, the ways that, that prevents, not prevents, our teachers are still doing it, but not under optimal conditions. So we're really excited at the high school about the opportunities that the flexible learning spaces have for innovative teaching and also for just spaces that allow our diverse learners to get what they need.
And I just want to add, you know, I think we've all seen, based upon the demographics of the district, as the demographics shift and change, the diversity of our learning needs shifts and changes as well. We've seen a tremendous increase in our ENL population, which is a wonderful thing for cultural, for diversity, but there are needs that exist there. Our special ed population has increased. Well, we need spaces in order to do that. And right now, I can say for the middle school, we don't have those spaces. And, you know, as much as I want to be able to steal from the high school, they don't have those spaces either. So really, it's, it's time that we begin thinking about how do we create those spaces? And this plan definitely helps to do that. I'm up.
You know.
Thanks. So this is, the coherence of programmatic locations is something that, that Andy spoke about before. But we really want to talk through being able to do this in a, in a very systematic and purposeful way. Like Andy said, the, the building is kind of a hodgepodge right now, both buildings. And it has happened over time, and it's happened because we had a space and we used it. But we really want to sit down and think about what should go where. And as we begin to do that, we talk about different classes, we talk about departments, we even talk about offices. You'll see in this design, there is a movement of the middle school main office. The main office right now is in a terrible location. It really is not ideal where it is. It's not necessarily located next to the entryway. It's not necessarily a convenient place when parents come to visit to be able to get to. Well, this is where we start thinking about these kinds of things. And right now, we talk about with a new entryway, an opportunity to rekind of position that main office. So it becomes a welcoming place for parents when they come in to be able to go right to the office if they need to. And it's those kind of decisions that we really want to begin thinking about as we begin to redesign this. Once we have that space, how can we move things around in order for students, for parents, for the community? When we think about community events, the new cafeteria would be a phenomenal space to hold community events, that we could have easy access, whether it's through the building or through the back entrance, through the tunnel, to be able to welcome parents in and make that space convenient. Just from a middle school perspective of recess, right now, when students leave the cafeteria to go to recess, they traverse through the building, which is definitely not ideal. But when they come back in, they traverse back through the building. And we do remember the mid-period flip of lunch. So it's multiple times throughout the day that we get this mass movement of students through the building. This new design of the cafeteria would completely eliminate that. It would allow the students direct access out onto the recess yard, direct access back in to the cafeteria, which would be great.
But by a similar token, the, when we look at our counseling department and our division for not just a high school counseling department and a middle school counseling department, but a K-12 continuum of counseling services, right? The fact that our counseling departments are on opposite ends of the building is an impediment to the type of collaboration and coherence that could otherwise happen, happen quite easily just by virtue of proximity. And so to essentially be able to start from scratch and say, what belongs where, is a really exciting prospect. We spoke a lot about the, the way the new entryway is exciting by virtue of ease and accessibility. It's exciting in terms of branding. It's exciting in terms of safety and security. So I, I think that when we, when we saw the mockups of the, of the entryway room, that, that is something that we've been missing, which is kind of adjacent to the question of overall modernization. The building nineteen oh-two, the first piece, is there, when you walk into our building, the, the vibe that you have, the, just kind of overall relationships that we are attempting to cultivate are ones that prioritize student voice and prioritize the sense of student ownership of the space, which is, which is a very modern idea of what education can and should be, right? In nineteen oh-two, the, it was a different ethos of what education should be, right? It was creating good workers, right? And that is not what we're building for, and that is what our building is currently constructed for. And that is how it feels when you walk in the building, in spite of the fact that the relationships feel other than that, right? And so this modernization of the building will allow for the building to feel and have the types of flexible spaces and the types of, just the aesthetics that put student voice and ownership front and forward.
And I think an important thing to note, and Andy and I really made this point clear when we talked to the architects and the designers, we don't want to lose the nostalgia of the building. Like, there is, there's a, there's a Hastings to the building. And I know I just made Hastings into a verb, but there is. Like, there's something about it that we want to make sure that we don't lose, especially as that design feature happens. But when I, when I was here and talked about the master plan for the middle school, you know, there's a difference between old and dirty, right? Our buildings are never dirty. They really aren't. Our, our team does a phenomenal job, but the building's old and needs work. And there are so many things that really, I think, students see and really deserve a better sense of, of what they're, what they're, what they're made of. And that can happen through this modernization process. And the last thing on this chart, we by no means are looking to get rid of our friends in central office, but at the same time, when, when the decision was made to place central office in that absolutely positively prime real estate of the building, you know, I don't know if, if students were really placed at the, at the forefront when that decision was made. We really are looking to hopefully regain that space and shift them to a, a better location. No, no, we don't want you at the parking lot. Nope, definitely not. But we, we're hoping to, like Andy said, that would be an ideal space in the center of both buildings for a, a combined guidance suite, something that students can, can access as they're, as they're traversing through the building like that. It, central office being where it is also creates a, a bit of a security issue. There are a lot of visitors that come to, to central office, a lot of visitors to the business office, to the special education office, and they all have to be personally escorted through the building. Putting them in a separate location, in a different location in the building that provides easy access with their own access would really be an ideal. And I think that, you know, overall, being able to provide them with easy access to the community would be, would be an ideal thing for us. So those are the big, the big thoughts and ideas and connections. And we are here to, to hear thoughts, ideas, questions, and be able to help in any way we can.
All right, dip my toe in, just to give frames up. So we have about twenty minutes. So just to, before you guys have to go. Any questions, comments for either principal?
Thank you for the presentation and the plans and your vision. This idea of student voice and teacher collaboration is so exciting and so necessary. I was curious, in preparing these plans, was there a student survey? Was there a teacher survey? Like, what kind of input was involved in forming all this so that we have, you know, buy-in moving forward?
Sure. So do you want to?
Oh, sure. I mean, only because it was a little bit, I mean, you can speak to it if you know the-
The, the architects did a comprehensive need assessment prior to, prior to this work that involved interviews with all stakeholders. And so that was in the twenty, thirty, forty-page slide deck that, that they presented. We kind of found that, and then how can we speak to the lived experience that we have as leaders of the building, to those points and kind of bring them to life. But there's nothing in here that we came up with that was separate from the needs assessment that was conducted by the, by the architects. It was just, it's our kind of articulation of, and trying to paint a picture for you all, that, you know, maybe when it's tucked away on page seven of the slide deck, it gets a little bit off. This was, they started from a playlist of what are the needs of the community, which we, we thought they were spot on.
I was going to say, and having seen the, the rough data, you know, that was collected from all of those, that I think they have done a phenomenal job in being able to reflect the needs, the wants, and the desires of all of those different constituency groups. Not one rose above the other. Like, it really was very much pulling all of the major themes out of what they heard from those groups and then turning that into a vision for the future.
I, I would ask sort of as an open-ended question. I don't know if either of you have had experience in districts that have had a transformation of facilities, you know, but I'm curious, if you have had that experience, you know, having gone through it, what do you, what do you see as a result of, at the, at the end of it? What are the different things you've noticed, whether in the students, the staff, or how things change? How the facility ends up changing, changing what you can do?
Do you have more extensive experience with this?
Happy to do it. Absolutely. So, yeah, in, in my previous district, I had the, the pleasure of kind of shepherding and helping three different bonds go through at about a hundred and eighty million dollars total. You know, when I was principal of the middle school, we did a complete renovation of the middle school, to the point where I stood at one end of the building and could see the other end of the building. There were no walls. And then added a two-story addition onto the building. In our high school, we added a three-story connective addition with twelve science labs, I believe it was, and a new cafeteria. And then, as I was transitioning to here, they were in the process of doing a true renovation bond of, you know, about a hundred million dollars of all sorts of different things. The feel in the building just changes. You know, from a, from a pride perspective, you know, I always say that, you know, when students see something that they feel like isn't cared about, they don't care about it. But when there's something new, they tend to be much more respectful of it. From an instructional lens, the size of the classroom made a huge transformational change. You know, when we, when we increased classroom size, square footage size, up to the, the seven hundred, seven hundred square feet, and science labs up to eleven hundred square feet, the, the kinds of things that you can do just is exponentially more and, and more reasonable to be able to have happen. You know, I think we saw changes like this bond would do in the flow of traffic and how students are no longer standing literally on top of each other as they're moving down hallways, where you can actually, you know, make it in three minutes without having to run because you know that when you turn that corner, that this hallway is going to be jam-packed and you're not going to be able to make it through. All of those things began to just ease the tension within the building. And, you know, from a, a middle school perspective, we saw a tremendous decrease in the number of disciplinary incidents in the hallways. We saw students being much more calm, much more relaxed. So overall, you just get that, that new vibe within the building, and it, it makes it much more pleasant for students to be there.
I'll also add, Dr. Heidi Hayes Jacobs, who's known internationally for her work around responsive learning, had recently done something for the region around space and being responsive to this notion of form following function. So if you want more innovative learning practices and more innovative use of space and more authentic- authentic opportunities and, you know, being able to enter into a place and redefine the room, you know, it's not even that it's just like there's a front of a room, um, you can really do some very innovative, creative work, and form has to follow function, right? So you're thinking about the form you need based on the function of what you're trying to create, moving out of more of an antique, like, an antiquated model of like, let's just, yes, we all fit, you know, but really being able to open that up and thinking about opportunities for more flexible collaborative work.
Just want to add one other thing. One of the things that, that we truly focused on and made a priority was school spirit, uh, when we did those renovations. Colors matter. Um, you know, we just started, you know, working in the middle school, being able to say, you know, why are rooms painted blue? Uh, you know, like, where, where is the Hastings green? Um, you know, where are those elements in the hallways of being able to show Hastings' pride? Um, you know, we saw it in the high school much more, but, but we're one district, you know, we're all Yellow Jackets, um, so why isn't that, you know, carried through? And through that design work, uh, in the previous work that we've done, um, you know, coming down to, you know, picking tile colors, picking paint colors, picking desk colors, picking chair colors, it all fed into a whole new sense of pride, uh, within, within the building, uh, and it was really nice to see.
By a similar token, I, uh, have, have not shepherded through, uh, what'd you say, a hundred and fifty million dollars in, uh, but I, uh, having spent the entirety of my, my career in, in New York City public schools, um, you, you get to see a lot of different schools. Um, so I've been in probably fifty-plus different high schools over my career. And, uh, to Scott's point of the ways that, uh, physical environment matters for the climate of the school and the, and, and how people relate to one another, I have seen enough of a range of just the ways that vibrant physical spaces lead to the types of vibrant communities that you, that you, that you want to see, and the vast majority of my experience in the city of those vibrant places are still working within the constraints of, it's an old building, we figured out ways to do paint, uh, and, and colors and plants and paintings and, and couches in the hallways, and it starts to feel more homely, um, homey, uh, but it's another level to be able to really design the space, uh, to Melissa's point of the form following the function. Um, we, right, right now, uh, during lunch, we have kids who are hanging out in the locker alcoves.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to be in the crowded cafeteria space, so that, like, they're sitting on the floor in front of the lockers, right? And the mockups have transformed those into communal spaces, right? Where, where, they don't have to sit on the floor to do that, they can, they can relax and, and they still have their private, not privacy, but they still have the smaller setting, uh, to create the types of relationships that they want.
Thank you, Catherine.
I was just gonna say that Dr. Zmansky's point about form following function reminded me of a presentation I saw this week from Comac Schools, Dr. Ryan Cox, the superintendent there, they've done tremendous work, uh, about five years, they did portrait work just like we're doing, and then just recently they reopened their building and reorganized their building to really have authentic learning and have both, um, like, med school area, like, just they've really redesigned it, so those people who want to see sort of the potential of an instruction-driven reform that really speaks to what we want our students to be in the future, that's really, um, job-oriented, of different things, and career-oriented, from medical to law to cosmop, to cosmetology. Um, I recommend checking out, checking out Comac Schools, and I actually asked for his presentation, so I'm happy to share it with anyone. I know, I'm such a nerd.
Please do.
Um, but it's, it's pretty exciting, and it's, it's really, I think, hopeful, and it speaks to what everyone's talking about here.
It's super exciting. It's really, uh, you know, you feel like you're standing on the, on the, not the precipice, precipice has a negative connotation, uh, just like...
Starting line?
You're looking out at the horizon, you're seeing the opportunity.
Yeah. I have a question about the short-term plan for students, uh, that are going to be impacted possibly by the construction. Uh, I really appreciate the accessibility piece and the student with IEP giving them more spaces, but what is going to be, or what is the plan to assist those students who are going to be, additionally don't have space and now are going to be dealing with construction noise, additional people in the building, hallways being closed, dust, things like that?
So the vast majority of this work, and we, we, in terms of the plans, they're not kind of at the level of, uh, phasing with what's happening specifically, like, what we're doing over the summer, what works, uh, but the instructional time is going to be the priority in terms of developing that phasing. Uh, in addition to that, while there is some significant reworking of the spaces that we currently have, the vast majority of this construction is not within the kind of existing structure of the building, right? The, the addition of the cafeteria, and I'm not somebody who builds buildings for my career, but I think the vast majority of that could happen while classes are currently in session, uh, you know, whatever, they're doing, it's super noisy, waits until the evenings, uh, but it's not like we're taking away classrooms and we have to find other places for kids to be, you know, in order for the construction to be placed.
I've lived it. Um, there will be impacts. That, that is, that's a given of, of construction. But what I can say is, having now met our, uh, construction manager, they play a huge role in the communication piece with Andy, myself, with Maureen, with Bill, in order to be able to minimize that to the extent that we possibly can. There will be some noise, we're gonna set off fire alarms, things of that nature, they, they happen. Um, but I think being able to plan this out and phase it in the right way, like Andy said, the construction of that cafeteria being right in the center there of the courtyard, you know, hopefully they can do things like swing steel and the, the loud stuff, hopefully that can be phased in the summertime, when we have a minimal number of students here. When they do jackhammering of concrete, you know, hopefully that's done during a non-instructional time, and they work with us in order to really try and do that, uh, the best they possibly can. But it's important that we communicate, right? And we need to hear from teachers what that impact is. Um, I've had situations where, you know, we're getting to, I've provided them with dates that say, these are blackout dates, like, we've got state testing coming, you're not doing construction during that time. Like, you want to do internal stuff? Fine, you can do plumbing, you can do heating, whatever it might be, but you can't do anything during that time period. So really, it's all about kind of working through that and doing the best planning that we possibly can.
Yeah, I just want to say, we also did live through it at Hillside, and that, that addition was a much more extensive, um, construction in terms of the actual, uh, location and the excavation and the rock and the blasting and the, all of that. So it is, like Scott said, it will have some level of disruption, but I think, you know, we did fairly well there, and that construction did occur throughout the school, because as much as, yes, there's some work that will have to be done in the summer, but realistically, it's not a job that, it would take, similar to Hillside, it's going to be a twenty-month, so, you know, even the inter, interior renovation work, this, some of the heavy lifting work you try to do during school breaks, but Hillside was actually, uh, we began that work in February of a school year. I mean, because sometimes with permits, you're not going to wait till the summer either, you have to kind of weigh out, you know, the different pieces, so, and also second shift work is more expensive, so there are things, but we do, as, um, Scott mentioned, working with the construction managers and the teachers and communicating and giving them blackout dates and all the rest. It does, it does come together, and I'm sure, you know, I definitely know the teachers that, I don't want to minimize the impacts to those at Hillside, its classrooms are closest to that, but, um, they all kind of understood the, the vision and, you know, they were patient with, with the, uh, with the work.
I, I think just my point is, I want to ensure that those graduating students of those years of construction also are going to have the same amount of school pride as the students that are going to live in the new space.
Yeah, no, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, fortunately, the, the team here is very experienced in those exact questions, and then it's dependent on who's hired as the external partner, if you will, the construction manager, all the rest, but all of us are very experienced in those exact questions, and L A N so far is super experienced to hold us accountable, and if your family's listening right now, to have two relatively new principals showing their expertise in this realm with a vision and a compassion for this, and bring the greatest clarity I've seen on a fifty, sixty-page document and attach values and vision to it is, I think, to me, very significant. But again, to the nuts and bolts, the board and community have to know, you just, you are lucky to have a team that understands the nuts and bolts that lead to the, we have to think through here. And look at Hillside. Hillside is a great example of when a, a community invests in better space to get to a higher level of education and vision, you can get there while school's in session, um, so.
Uh, before they have to go, anyone else, uh, questions or comments for principals? I'll throw a small ball question, I think it might be just sort of general, but since you might weigh in on it, I'm just curious if, one of two things, they're related, if there's programming that we've, concrete programming that we've wanted to do that we have not been able to do because we don't have space, and relatedly, if we've had classes where we, we, they were, enrollment topped out because the space available for that class was too small to take anybody else, is that a fair, you know, fair question? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I don't know if we, in terms of that, I mean, the second part, I don't think we've ever shut something down because of seats.
I mean, unfortunately, you're talking to two people who don't have the longevity to...
No, that's what I figured, right?
Know the, the, the longitude of that. Um, I can say, in the time that I've been here, you know, we've made it work. Um, you know, like I've mentioned before, I would love to see, you know, more robust engineering programming, and, I mean, I think that's thinking for the future. I don't know that we necessarily have said, this needs to happen now, but we can't because there's not this space, um, but I would say...
Can I say algebra?
Well, let's go there.
Oh, let's hear it.
Yeah, meaning we, very crowded math classes and...
Oh, this past year, yeah, last year.
Last year of a very large number, uh, it's okay that I actually knew this, and I, gosh, I knew something that nobody else here knew. No, but meaning it was very real.
It was math eight.
Very large classes, over thirty, and we would have said, we can afford to, because we need to, hire an additional teacher, as hard as to find a great math teacher, we would have done it, we had no place to go.
That was last year.
You know, that great phrase you had a little while ago, we have no place to put it. So, I mean, and that's fundamental within the core program you want, and, you know, our math program has to get to higher ground, and you can see right there, space matters while trying to, trying to get to that. That's, and, and you can go to the more advanced kind of hopes around anything with, as Scott had mentioned, uh, the robotics and all the rest.
Yeah, I, I just want to point, it's particularly interesting with what Dr. Zmansky brought up, brought up about functional space, because, and also the point of having thirty kids in a math class. For example, some of the diagrams we had in that, that building report from PBDW showed that, you know, you can have a room that people fit in legally, thirty square foot per kid, but, as opposed to forty-five, let's say, but once you get to, at forty-five, you can have desks spaced out where the teacher can flow between them, right? And in a class with thirty kids learning algebra, you might need a teacher to flow and notice and help, but when you get down to thirty, it is, it is like economy class, there's no way in, you know, literally. And so it's sort of like, to your, to Dr. Zmansky's point, that it can fit, it's legal, it, it's, it's running, but it's not very functional for teaching, and it's not very accessible to what the teacher would perhaps prefer to do in that class. So I think it's a very, it's a very small, but I think it's an important point for us to raise whenever we can, because my sense is that it happens, like, you guys make it work, but my sense is that it, it's a bigger theme than, than it's visible so easily from looking at the document.
We, we have, um, a, a new philosophy club this year, um, which, if you're looking to put a smile on your face, come to Philosophy Club at, uh, three o'clock on Thursday afternoon. It's forty students arguing about whether, um, uh, what was the most recent one? Um, they were arguing about whether or not we have free will, right?
It's a good one.
Free will in two weeks.
And, and it was hot because there were forty students in a classroom that was meant to have twenty-seven students in it, and they said, are there any other spaces that we can go to? And they don't exist, right? The other, the other space that is large is this space, and it's taken during some of those times, not all of them, but some of those times. Um, the, the auditorium's not a good space for that, it's to, but, so, they're, Catherine, to your point about like future casting, career-oriented, experiential, authentic learning, like, the spaces need to exist to, to allow us to have the program for those.
Thank you, I, I, you guys are at time, so I just wanted to point that out in case you had to, to get out. But any other quick questions or comments for the principals?
I mean, I just wanted to observe that I felt, I found this list of, you know, needs that would be, that are going to be addressed hopefully with, you know, whatever the direction and shape of the bond takes is being helpful, and I think just moving forward as we, you know, our, our discussions become more involved and more fleshed out, I think it will be helpful when we get into decision-making mode to kind of prioritize this, because, you know, we don't live unfortunately in a world where we have unlimited funds, and so to a certain extent, there has to be choices that we're going to make. So it's helpful in terms of looking at this, um, to have a sense of priorities, and obviously I'm not asking you to address any of that now, but I think because you do walk the buildings every day with and without the students, you have an understanding that we don't possess about what really is a, like, put this fire out immediately at the top of the list, and to the extent you can inform us with that, that's really helpful, so, thank you.
We, we appreciate that, that level of input, we really do, thank you.
Thank you both, thank you. Um, so, we're not moving on, we're moving in, we're going to open it up for, is that fair to say?
Yep.
We're going to open up for just a general discussion, uh, bond questions or comments or concerns that we have, so.
Let, let me do one other update from a timeline standpoint, you're, um, and I really want this, you know, as Alex, Sylvie and I are thinking about this part of the meeting, it's a chance for you to talk a bit about a giant amount of information, they've left, so they're not going to hear the compliment. Um, Maureen and I, once Alex and Sylvie gave the green light to Andy, and Scott said, you know, I think it's a time for you to come and begin to, they pulled this together, and I think we should all be incredibly hopeful that relatively new leaders look through incredibly complex material, and yes, Scott had spent maybe half a year to, with the architects, Andy's maybe three times with the architects, but for them to get this clarity and go to your really good question, Sylvie, what they did is to say, it's the top four across the top that are the elements of this plan, and then what's the benefit you're getting, and they're saying, if you can afford Hastings to do all four of those, here's the benefits you get in a very interactive way, grounded in where we'd want to be instructionally. I said to Scott and Andy when I saw this, now here's the update, a few of you have been critically saying, where's the communications plan? Where's the communications plan? It's exactly the questions to ask. Um, this is the start of clarity on a communications plan, so not on the sixth, but the next meeting, November nineteenth, I'm doing my dates right, Southern West Church or Bosse's will come forward with a draft conceptual plan about what is in the communications. So I just want to let you know, we keep moving ahead as a ways to help people understand, because in meeting with the PTSA scepter this weekend, a number of issues in the middle school, um, Scott heard from families, eh, we're not so sure about this bond, we're not so sure about this bond, you know, what's in it for us? Well, you can see that there's a lot in it, we can start communicating that out, but I, this is a chance for you, I just want to begin to show you where we keep looking ahead in very tangible ways as to what has to happen.
Thank you. The perspectives, questions? No? Uh, I'll open, if, if it's okay. Um, so, obviously the bond we're building for the future of the school system, and I think that there are a lot of themes emerging on the horizon in New York State about education, and I'd like to understand, maybe from, I'm sorry, from anybody's perspective on how these might impact the school district looking forward. So one of the sort of simplest ones is, we understand that, being I said, quite soon in the graduation measures redo, there's going to be an expectation that apart from traditional subject matter, you're going to have things like civics expected to be taught, financial literacy, cultural competency, um, I forget some of the other ones. So, you know, from an administrator's standpoint, when you hear that you're going to have to meet those obligations, in terms of facilities, do you immediately wonder like, okay, where's that going to go? How's it going to fit? Is, do you see those sort of new requirements that are, again, these are graduation requirements, these are not just things which are suggested, do you wonder how that's going to work in the building? Is that part of, you know, an open-ended, if, if somebody has an opinion on that? Or Catherine?
I, I mean, I can start a little bit, and then, um, I, I think what's most important now, it's a great question, is us as them, them as us. I sit a lot with superintendents, it's not clear what's going to emerge when from the Blue Ribbon Commission. It's not clear what's going to emerge relative to some pretty severe state budget situations, which we're going to talk about. going to talk about later. It's not clear what's going to emerge from this regionalization push. But why matters us is them, the concepts that are most compelling about the Blue Ribbon graduation work. And I'd share that in some memos with you. What's most compelling is we're already there. And I think it's in some of the answers that Andy and Scott gave. That if you want to have deep engagement around philosophy, and so you're not in a room sweating with thirty-nine other people, where do we go for that? If you want to have algebra classes that aren't overcrowded, where do you go for that? If you want to have, you know, more of a blend here of career readiness than we've had, where do you go for that? We literally can't go anywhere. And I'm going to say, and what also I like here is fresh eyes on the challenges of Hastings, but loving Hastings, right? And so, I got here, and I've been in maybe two hundred schools. The first thing that jumps out, I hate to say it, in the middle school is behavioral sync. It is so darn-
I'm sorry, is behavioral?
Behavioral sync. It is so darn crowded that we have wonderful kids, but then you jam them up against each other, and naturally, an active middle schooler is going to bump in. So, that, in a sense, how do you get to that higher ground on behavioral pieces? Where do you go? The testing center, if we're truly per the graduate, the Blue Ribbon Commission and go to a very broad set of measures, not just the tests, Regents is here, it's not going anywhere. So Regents, other types of quantitative, the qualitative indicators and measures, how do we do that? We don't have the space to go there. Because that's through teachers collaborating and thinking differently, and as you heard in the middle school, they can't do that. You know, so I don't know, I'm trying to stitch together some things.
No, I wanted to see sort of, that is, that's very interesting, and I totally accept that. I'm just curious how we look at the future of the space here as well. And again, yeah, I mean, it makes perfect sense. You want to say something?
Well, I was going to say that. I sent to the board all the stuff on Dr. Crox, the school in Comac, and people can see it at large. But that's exactly what he's redid his school for, for sort of that learning and thinking about preparing students for the future. I would also say that I've been to a bunch of these meetings from the Blue Ribbon Commission as well, and it does seem like the Regents is here for a while. And that the, but the implementation and the hope, you're right, is for this collaboration and for really pushing students to be these deep critical thinkers, which many of our students, teachers are doing already with the students. But I do think there's a fair amount of retooling in the plans out there. So I also think there's just a lot of funding for professional development, for teaching and learning and for changing. So as much as I hear the space conversation, I also think there needs to be place and space for, you know, teachers to grow and change with changing mandates as well.
That's a good point, actually, because I don't even know where that stuff happens.
So, I think too, when we're thinking about the portrait of a graduate, we're also thinking about elevating attributes. And then I want to be thinking about, you know, so not just, when we're thinking about these competencies, when we're thinking in Hastings very specifically, it's bold, collaborative, empathetic, empowered, inquisitive, and inventive. And arguably, if you have more fluid spaces, the ceiling can be higher in terms of where you're going with that. So part of it is, you can create instructional assignments that are more authentic, that really elevate these attributes and create opportunities. And also, when you couple that with spaces that can be redefined and worked with in different ways, you can have a lot more movement on those things. It can definitely be amplified. And I spent the afternoon, this afternoon, with our Behavioral Charter Committee. And just adding on to what Bill was saying about the middle school and being a behavioral sync, the conversation in the room was largely around, you know, if we're looking at the attributes, not just from the academic standpoint, but also that social emotional standpoint, and how do we create conditions where we're having learning environments, where, where we're engendering feelings of being safe and respected, and all of these things that, that frankly, our surveys and our focus groups, that this group the year before sought from, from the faculty, from randomly selected participants that they interviewed, from the children that were able to give voice to it. A lot of it was around, the work today was starting to think about, what are all of these behaviors? How do we align them to these attributes? And when I'm looking at that and thinking about even what we did in, you know, just this afternoon, it was really around, okay, we're trying to create these conditions, and it's not just about how we're, how we are functioning academically, but also, how are we functioning in our space? And anyone who has, you know, read some psychology around caged rats, for example, I'm not suggesting that that's, you know, but you don't want that feeling. You know, you, you have other amplified things happening that actually detract from the learning environment as well. So it's both academic and having that form and function piece, and then also that behavioral. And then, all of that fits in very nicely with, with the state's portrait of a graduate.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing, just again, I know they focused a lot on program, but I think, just to bring it back to like, the initial, similar to Hillside, at least the cafeteria addition is simply really about space, right? So, you know, there is a need even beyond that. I think there's the addition, that would be, in addition to, the cafeteria is where you start getting to the programming and those other items. But we do know in the last few years, and Scott even spoke about it, I mean, I know even as an example this year, the board then authorized a new section of fifth grade, we didn't split it, we didn't have a classroom to split it. So we have twenty-five and twenty-six kids again, which is not terrible, but, but above Hastings' norms. Similarly, last year, we had no space to split math sections. There was not a space available in this building. In that analysis that we said, oh, well, let's make sure that there isn't space that isn't being correctly utilized, that's what the architects did. So we know that the middle school, according to current enrollment, not even the future, are thirty percent short in spaces that they would actually need to kind of properly, in certain aspects. And when I say that is because there are times, again, even since my kids have been here, there weren't the level of ICT classrooms that exist now. I mean, that's just a fact. You know, even if you look at just the amount of staffing that we do have in this building and children where they are. So in the middle schools, an example, those classes, they had twenty-seven children, two teachers, three teacher desks, a teacher assistant, three, like, this was in a classroom that's sub-six hundred square feet. I mean, so you're talking about, there is a space issue. And I think the first step, and, and also the cafeteria, although it served us, you know, pretty well, it isn't large enough really to accommodate even the capacity of the lunch hour. So we're over capacity in the current space. So I think, even to take it back, I think those other things are wonderful, but even the first kind of phasing of what I believe is what would be likely proposed would be the cafeteria, which would at least provide, you know, at least the four additional classroom spaces that arguably, right now, you're short, or more, and then allow for some of those special education, testing center, and all the rest. So, I think those other pieces are probably, my guess, because of funding and money and all the rest, would need to be then put into a different bond, would be, because I think we also know we have some other work that has to be done here. But I think that even, I think there's, even beyond what they said in the wayfaring and all the rest, which are problematic, I think we do have a space issue. Like, just that simply needs to, like, and, and around ENL and special ed and other things such as that, that's also, you know, now a need. And even, in, similar to Hillside, like where, you know, maybe there was one, I thought of two, I think one when my children went there, and now there's four, you know. So there's, things like that require space. And we recently have now a math intervention in the middle school, and now they're hoping to get a reading. And again, they didn't, when we wanted to hire a reading person, they didn't have a space to provide for that person. So there are some real practical, I'm just kind of to go back to like, that first level, I think is really focusing on that first piece, which I think they try to solve. And the other, kind of, I was thinking about what Scott did last year, a lot of the parents would like to see additional recess, and I think, we did attempt to do the two grade levels, I don't know if anyone remembers this, last year in the cafeteria. And it was really a great idea. It's just that the, this, the service areas as they're configured don't, weren't really, and you can't really do anything about it, just kind of confined in space. So I think that would also allow like scheduling for our cafeteria to change, which right now, we're unable to do. And I know that was a consideration with schedule too. So those are things that they didn't discuss tonight, but I know that they've spoken about, and I just felt, I didn't want to interrupt them, but I remember them saying it.
Good.
I have one last question, if anybody else wants to jump in ahead of me.
I was going to say, hearing you speak, it's fantastic, and like, getting a sense of the trends. Because I've seen, I've heard, I've heard some talk outside about, is enrollment really increasing? What does it look like? And I think people don't always understand that different populations are increasing, and they need their needs met in different ways.
Yeah, good point.
So I wonder if somehow we could explain, like, in a five-year data trend chart, just showing like, how things have changed and how we need to meet the needs of all of our learners. I think that would be helpful for the, like, I'm in my fiscal steward hat, like, for all the members of the community.
We can plant that line of communication with the, I feel like I've lived everything. So I've lived that before elsewhere, very, in a very real way. So I think it's a communications piece. And eighty-five percent to ninety percent will agree and listen, and ten percent, no matter what, will think it's false. But it, but it's real, and we can do that.
Yeah.
But I can give that, so on the nineteenth, we can make sure November hit.
Because it was so clear when you said it.
Yeah, no, yes.
And that, similarly, was at Hillside, again, where maybe, like, there, there was a trend not, and sometimes it, like, five or six children for us will end up splitting a section. So sometimes it's not necessarily doesn't bear out in the actual enrollment number, even for the, for just even class sections. But it may then be just, you know, just thinking around where the sections people are more comfortable and-
And the servicing piece.
And the servicing, and the ICT in particular, where I know, and that was probably about seven or eight years ago, we only had one section of ICT K5. Now we have two sections of ICT K5. So that means that there's more staffing in those rooms, and then, you know, again, those other services that we're now, you know, seeing. And Hillside in particular, that also has specialized, special education programs that didn't exist, right? So, things like that, that I know they're not, it's harder to bear that out in enrollment numbers at times, you know.
Yeah. To that point, sort of my, one of my questions was, is, do we imagine that maybe, you know, I think we're all seeing the increasing value of MTSS, especially as it relates to, you know, that bridge between special education, general education. Is there any thought that, with a different space, that we might have like dedicated spaces to MTSS? Was that, would you see value if physically that program was more structured or more, you know, put in a better way, like physically?
So, honestly, it depends on the student needs that come up. And so often, it can be delivered through, you know, it depends what tier. So if there's differentiated instruction that's going to be happening, that would be back in the classroom environment. Arguably, if there was more space, there would be more ability to do, if you want to pull a group, if you want to do some in-class, quick intervention, back to the other assignment, whatever the case may be. And I think for any kind of tiered support that's provided outside of the classroom, it definitely would open things up, definitely. And, you know, when you have space available, you're less dependent on crunching everything into a more defined schedule. The goal with MTSS is to keep kids, you know, in the classroom as much as possible, though arguably, some students really do need that tiered intervention that is a pullout structure. So it would really just depend on the student need.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the bond?
I just have one comment. Writing some tenants that I heard around, fixing the physical space is going to, you know, fix the emotional state of the students. And I know that that's not really a piece of it, but I was thinking about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and really, it's, how are we also investing in those community building pieces, the DEI work, restorative practices, on top of that? And I know we're doing that. But I don't want the community to think that, oh, if we fix this space, kids are going to fall in love and they're just going to be in a welcoming place. So how do we take the space issue, and then we take the equity and inclusivity and SEL of the school, and combine it together to say that these pieces with the space are going to come together to form that? So I don't really have a question, but I just want to make sure that we're not saying the space is the fix-all.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's a good criteria for communication, how we approach it.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting point. I was thinking, you know, I flew out of LaGuardia often, back, and for a long time, it was like going to the bus station, you know, and I would like, I didn't even notice, I would like gird myself, and I'd like, get ready. And then, whenever it was, like, two, three years ago, I hadn't flown for a while because of COVID and the pandemic, and I went to LaGuardia. Has anyone been there recently?
Yes, it's gorgeous. It's amazing.
I mean, what happened? And I remember, there was a trip I took, maybe two years ago, and the same thing, I prepared myself, I girded myself, and I walked in there, and it was like going to a spa, and-
You never got on the plane, right?
Yeah, I was just like, I was like, we should fly here more often. But it was just like-
Go there three times a week for staying out.
The point is that people, like, the mood, the people were relaxed, and the mood was, I was obviously relaxed. But it was just like, it was really remarkable, I mean, intellectually, you know that a space can change how you feel, but it was really like an eye-opening experience to go out of there. So I do think, and to your point, I think that that does have a large effect. I also think having more spaces for people to be in, where they can be as a group, because it is tight in this building. There, at lunchtime, there are more kids spread around the building that are in, than are in the lunchroom, and there are little nooks and crannies. And I always, often think, like, like, you know, there's no, there's not much space that belongs to anybody. It's just kind of randomly spread around. And if the students want to chime in, feel free. We're going to segue soon to your student report. But, you know, yeah, I would be curious about your perspective on some of these comments.
Yeah. I was actually just going to add on to what you were saying, and not to like stack conversations on top of each other, but I know that there's the ongoing discussion about phones and their usage in school. And Mr. Kleiman has been kind enough to have attended a number of SU meetings recently, and so we've been having this discussion. But one of the things that was brought up that I think is really important and does connect to this is the idea of phones as one of the major reasons of the declining mental health in recent generations. And so one of the arguments put forth was, oh, if we take away the phones during school time, our kids' mental health will go up. Which, I think, looking at logic, yes, that's a possibility. I also think that, just as a generation, you know, the anxious generation, all of this, I think that there's also attention that needs to be paid to resources, resources and mental health help and aid in the schools. And we have a wonderful, wonderful counseling department. And I think that really helping to boost that, you know, in the same way that is fixing the space, the same thing is, you know, fixing the mental state, you know, adding phones into that conversation, seeing how that plays out as well, is something to consider.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Any other questions or comments for the bond? What's our, what would be our, if we're wrapping up on this, what's our next bite of the apple to discuss?
Well, we're going to keep you busy. That's why, when we planned, when we had the retreat and then planned out that agenda plan you'll come back to, it's, it's trying to quote the late Ted Sizer, less is more here, and this is a key focus. So, at the net, your next meeting on the sixth, you will have a major presentation as it relates to the athletic opportunities. Ahead of that, very efficiently, Drew and I, I'll take the leaks, things important, it's my voice, will kind of state the problem that we're trying to address as it relates to the fields. Then, LAN with LA Group will talk about the field options, and they are quite compelling. We, I know the history here, so it's still compelling. So there's that piece. And then, going back to this document, this almost becomes your course plan for as we move through everything. Then on the nineteenth, we will bring you a draft of communications approach. So you begin to see how we're trying to communicate things. And then the, which we'll get to in the superintendent report, there's a PTSA Septa forum that will substantially focus on this topic. So we're in an ongoing place. But the real technical role up our sleeve is what's it all going to cost, the prioritization that, Sylvie, you were hinting at, I mean, that, that's listed here is the one we have to get, get to that. And that's going to really start to help influence, you know, where we are.
Okay. And I'm just, no, yeah, I just want to kind of orient everybody.
And I think I just ordered us to keep going back to this, look at this, pay attention to it, because it really lays it all out as to the next steps.
Yeah. And we're, just to put one particular date in mind, that December seventeenth, that's BOE approval of scope of work. So we're about two months out from when that's sort of the deadline, just to sort of eyeball that.
Keep driving towards that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to student reports. Who wants to go first?
All right, give us like, two seconds to log back in.
Okay, no worries.
All righty. So I'll start us off with, I would like to extend my and many other congratulations to Mr. Ross Abrams, who is one of our fantastic English teachers. I had him last year. He's one of the kindest people I've ever met. He's amazing. And we just found out that he was awarded the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award, which I have to say is one thousand percent deserved. He is an amazing teacher, a wonderful person, and such an amazing addition to the school. So, huge, huge, huge congrats to him.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Totally agree, Kai. He's-
Are we celebrating him here? Like, is there some sort of, like, celebration?
That could be an idea.
That could be an idea.
I don't know, just that's, Student Union could do it too.
Yeah, we'll bring it up. We've got a meeting tomorrow.
I think we ought to celebrate our successes.
Big ones.
Big ones.
So walking into school today, I was cracking up because all of my friends were falling on their faces. They were exhausted, and that is because not only is it a terrible Tuesday, but it is the second day of the high school play's tech week. So while they're all going to be living off of three hours of sleep and immense amounts of caffeine, they're, all their work will come and be paid off on Friday when Inherit the Wind opens. I have heard so many amazing reviews from the cast and crew. I know that there's some audience participation, so if you guys want to get involved, then show up Friday night, seven o'clock. It's going to be amazing, I'll be there, I'm hyped.
Saturday also, or?
Yes, Friday and Saturday. And I know that many people are looking forward to and dreading this November first. So this is like a crazy day, we've got a couple of things going on, so I'm just going to run through them. First of all, day after Halloween, we're all going to be in like our little candy comas. But while we students aren't in the school, thank goodness, our teachers and parents will be. So that's our parent-teacher conference day. I know that my mom is meeting with a bunch of my teachers, and we've gotten some of our teachers asking around, oh, whose parents are coming? So they'll get a little taste of our days. In addition, it is also the deadline for a lot of early applications for colleges. So I know that some people have already started submitting, I know that people are waiting to get a little closer to the deadline. I'm trying to get everything submitted before that day, so not just my early stuff. And I know a bunch of other people are looking forward to that too. So that'll be a day off from school, parent-teacher conferences, and some college deadlines. So it's a big one, but we've got a couple days.
Thank you, Kai.
So along with the play this Saturday, there will also be a Westchester Youth Climate Summit, and it will be held in the middle school auditorium. And it's for those that attend, like who are interested in environmental and really taking a stand to help improve our environment. They will be hearing from local environmental community figures, organizers and professionals on climate science, education and advocacy. And students will leave ready to accelerate, exchange and use tools to become leaders of change towards a more sustainable future, which this has been organized by the Environmental Club. So I think it's a really great opportunity to really put yourself out there and sort of broaden your knowledge on this topic.
Is that Thursday, is that right?
It's Saturday.
I'm sorry, Saturday, okay.
It's open to high school students. And then also the following Sunday at Hillside Elementary, there will be the Hillside Halloween Fun Run, which will be held to raise money for our beloved schools. And participants will be able to wear their Halloween costumes while they run, so it'll be very festive, and they'll be completing a one-mile loop with, in any way of their choice. So the flyer noted that you could run, walk, bike, so it's very, it's like, it's really fun. And it's open to all K through five students, and they are able to attend with their friends and family. So it's really open to everyone. And then on Tuesday, the Hastings High School will be holding a performance by the Grammy-winning winds quintet, the Amani Winds, which is very, is very amazing in my opinion, because the fact that they are Grammy-winning and they're coming to our school is, seems a pretty big deal. And it's free also, and will be hosted in the high school auditorium at six.
Is that this coming to, next Tuesday?
Yes, the twenty-ninth. And then finally, the junior formal theme was announced for juniors, and it was Starry Night. So I'm very excited to see the decorations. And on November first, tickets will become available for purchase. And then if you're planning to bring a guest, an additional form and photo ID is required to, on hand when purchasing the tickets. And the junior formal is physically held on November twenty-first from seven to ten P M, that's all.
Excellent, Ella, thank you very much, thank you. Moving on to a report from Dr. McCursie, any, any, played on the screen?
Sure, I'll play it on the screen. And it will sound like Kai, Ella and I were connected in the muse sphere. So I will basically reinforce things they've said. So I think this is the third or fourth time that we're back to the future with this approach. So my letter this week did raise up, I think it's the first time since I've been here, recognition that this is a very significant month in terms of awareness for bullying. So I drew, I was directing that direct, going into that directly, credit to Cara Tomia for raising that, our communication consultant. And I was very direct in one part of that letter, and a little heavier than usual, but really stressing that we really have to strive to be an oasis here for respect and dignity of each other. And I think the vast majority of the time we are, but we have to remind ourselves to do that. And then I was able to link in, in that letter, some things that relate to the portion of the Hastings Learner, the Behavioral Charter, the work on restorative pieces, but then also what's happening at Hillside. And so we've elaborated in this presentation, again, it's in the public record, it's posted, it's kind of there forever now, but going into more detail on what at Hillside with our youngest students we're doing to help them understand and think about bullying. And then Unity Day, which was referred to a little bit in another publication. But here's some images and visuals as to what's happening and what's here. The discipline code, I love the clarity there, that districts that can get very few words to address this big stuff, children remember it, and I have to actually tell a story. I'm my fourteenth year in Greenwich. In Greenwich, they have three phrases that are still banging around in elementary children that were started out of the director of PPS. And it's just, and I'm not saying Greenwich is perfect, believe me, but I'm saying that when it was sitting in a, it was sitting in CCD in our parish. And in the class, the teacher said, what's a way we should behave? Four straight students played back the Greenwich values, public school values. So it's that kind of clarity and simplicity, if we can hold to it, we'll get absorbed and it helps. Again, you know, we're just helping people learn. Unity Tree at Hillside, again, you know, we want to go as deep as we can with our young children in accessible ways, and I think that's what's happening. Septa Carnival, another event to celebrate all our children with a lot of involvement. Great photos here, I appreciate those being gathered. The weather has cooperated for a lot of things this fall, and there was another example there. We've done the classroom looks, there's a classroom look here as it relates to in, classroom in, just a quick glimpse in, if you will. This is about our writing buddies, and I'm so impressed to see it starting so. There are really wonderful, enriching vids in our elementary classrooms at Hillside in a variety of ways. You see on the literacy side in terms of reading and inquiry, here you see how it's happening in terms of writing. Moving up to FMS, a look in here as it relates to studying different characters and the range and diversity of those characters, what it means for us here in Hastings for our young people. And then moving up to the high school, the robotics team, again, you know, if we can get more expanded space at some point, but still, you know, wonderful work underway. And it's, you can go look back and look at this in a little more detail. Student Union luncheons, Mr. Barone and Ms. Robles were there for the first of those, it'll be every month. It was, I think, quite an impressive discussion, tried to capture it here a little bit. Yes, there's pizza, which everyone absorbs, but it was a very impressive discussion around a, one about transitions, going through the transitions of new leadership in the high school, how are we doing? And transitions with student leadership, because in the spring, when I last left the group, their concern was transitions for the adults, i.e. Mr. Ray leaving, and for the students, Eric and Barney leaving, the two seniors. But it was a great discussion about that, and then we moved into a very robust discussion on mobile phones. And in that room, as you can see on the list, are certainly two of the board members, as well as Mr. Clayman. Mr. Lopez does a fabulous job facilitating that group. And then Melissa Samansky's often there, and I'm there hosting it. I don't know if our two board members want to chime in on that in this moment, I didn't, I didn't warn you, we'd be interactive right now.
Sure, yeah, I mean, it was a great conversation, and the students are very articulate in their opinions. One piece that really stood out for me is their opinions on cellphone use that might differ than the community's idea of cellphone use. So I think that we have state, different stakeholders now with differing opinions. And I think we have to somehow come together through conversation and through compromise and see where we're going to land on that. And I think it would be important maybe to hear some of those students here to speak about their opinions. Maybe they can come during, during time for them to speak, or maybe they can give a presentation on their side of the story, because we really want to hear that student perspective.
I think that's a pretty accurate summation. I mean, I think that they also thought through how it is that they, as student leaders themselves, try and make efforts to collect the voices of kids that they don't necessarily always hear from. So they were just trying to suss out, how do they have these smaller groups so that it's not just the usual suspects of people whose voices are represented? And I thought that was insightful of them, and also that they're sensitive to that, and that they do want to do, you know, that they want to represent, yes, what their opinions might be around the table, but how that might also differ and also be open to like the perspectives of like, not just the students, but also the adults in the building, so they were pretty sophisticated.
The one thing, we did remind them, and now the governor's mandated this, which is student representation is stable, and to work through those students in particular. So just like for you, we have public comment for any member of the community, or they can work through you, similarly for the students. And that seemed to resonate, I think it's clear where Kai's coming from on this, and Kai would appreciate me saying that. So you are gaining that perspective, but I think we can bring that back. You should know that it's an active, ongoing discussion with Andy and Steve, with the students. And then it's looking to build on this visit from Max Dossel, and Melissa Samansky and I were there in the evening. Melissa was good to get to the student sessions as well, I was off being a superintendent, learning about something. But it was, she was able to see that he was very appropriate for the adults relative to the young people. And he did resonate, he did resonate with the students. And there's some stolen phrases in my crafting that, you may have seen this in an earlier version over the weekend from me. But it's that sense of how do we control these digital tools as opposed to vice versa? And that may be the common ground unless the governor or somebody sweeps in. So this is where we were connected in muse land in terms of the student board reps. It's a very exciting moment for us, again, Hastings Education Fund is so valuable to us as a community, and this is an example, not to mention Eric Day and the others, who, I don't think Eric's name is up there, but he's the genius behind this whole connection. We then, Inherit the Wind, talked about here from Kai, kind of bringing that to life. And I think if you don't know the play, you may be curious about the poster, but if you know the play, it's a very apt capturing of what this important piece of drama is about. This is an important reminder, Una Spath is the student behind this, Bloomberg grants. I'm told Bloomberg Foundation is very impressed by the, the mayor's told us how we're doing with this. It's a village endeavor, it's led by the mayor, it's almost all our students, so we're trying to partner and be supportive. How many students will show up on Saturday for this, we're not sure. We're trying to do what we can to kind of remind people of this. So feel free to push this around and encourage people to attend. And then looking down the road, I mentioned earlier, these superintendent forums that had started long before I got here, this is something PTSA and Septa runs and organizes, they've suggested to focus on the bond. And the timing on that, while it's still concepts, will be, I think, it'll be a valuable evening. And I think we need to make sure that the Scott and Andy show a part of that.
Is that what we're calling them?
So, all right, so upcoming events, it's all right there. And I hope this continues to be a helpful way for you to understand what's happening in the district. And again, it's all posted, it's in the permanent record, so people can go back to look at it as you need to.
Excellent.
Thanks, Bill, this was great.
So helpful.
This was great.
I like it.
Well, I'll tell the team that prepared it.
Do.
Melissa? There's their three, three chefs in this kitchen.
Yep, so well done.
Yep.
I think those days are off, like the dates, like Monday's actually the twenty-eighth, I'm just saying, just so people understand.
This was a test, we wanted to see if anyone was reading.
Just so people know that the actual day is the Friday and the Monday, the day of the week is the right thing, not, don't follow the number.
We'll go back and fix it.
Just so if anybody actually is looking at that, they know to follow the day of the week and not the number.
All right, we'll fix it, thank you.
My birthday's the twenty-eighth.
Bill, thank you. Moving on to Dr. Shespansky, a couple of things you already mentioned, so you want to pull some?
I did, I did. The one last thing I'd like to just recognize is we had some professional learning that was provided by Dr. Janice Mateo Toledo and members of the E N L Department. And they were responding to some feedback and inquiries from faculty directly on additional support for English language learners, but for their professional practice so that they can build capacity as instructors. And I had the opportunity to sit in on that, and it was very, very well done in the sense that they were immersed as English language learners. I would like to thank Esther Fair from the elementary school, who actually facilitated a big portion of that in Hungarian, and actually created an authentic learning experience for our professionals. So I just wanted to recognize the great work that the team did around that led by Janice. So it was, it was really helpful.
Lovely, thank you, thank you. Moving on to a report from Maureen Carbala, business official.
So, so I know we've been, in Patrick's disc, we put, I have a couple of slides I'm going to put up on the screen. We've been talking since the beginning of September and kind of updating the board here about some new hires, like, you know, much, many of which, of course, have approved as part of personnel recommendations. So this just kind of gives a summary and the reason we felt it was important. We are beginning with our internal team to be working, starting our twenty-five, twenty-six budget process as we do this time of year. And it is important, though, and we've been talking about this with the leadership team, that with some different enrollment, more enrollments that we anticipate over the summer and just different needs that came kind of after the budget was already approved, this year we've had a significant, not completely unusual, but it's a much larger number of hires that we've made that were up and above our set budget. So again, just to kind of run it through for everyone, but that being said, it does, you know, it is something we're keeping our eye on and are watching very closely. So, you know, this is something that's just giving you a sense of, you know, how we're faring so far this year in terms of our budget. And, okay, so on the first, oh wait, clicker, here we go, okay. So on this slide, I tried to just summarize pretty quickly, and these are things that after our budget was adopted, and this was even prior to the summer, when even starting in May, or even right before the budget vote, some of the needs or different staffing needs were coming, like, things had shifted. So where are we from when we adopted our budget to where we sit today? So our budget, we've had to increase additional six teacher aid positions, and they are grouped by, you know, mandated services, which of course are what they are mandated services, meaning they're on students' I Ps and we're required to, you know, provide these positions. So in our budget last year, our staff, the staffing projection that Special Ed had provided based upon the student needs and anticipated student needs at that time changed. And then we, in fact, needed to hire six additional folks, some of actually which we had anticipated laying off, which again, that we reduced those dollars out of the budget. So that first line, it's approximately, these numbers, because depending upon people's selection of benefit levels are a bit different, but it's in and around about three hundred and thirty thousand or so. We, again, as you have more additional aides, and many of our students, if they have a one-to-one aide that needs to be with them all day, those aides are also entitled to their own lunch breaks and all the rest. And then that also has an impact on the amount of monitors we need, because again, they need to either be available to provide coverage for those additional staff members, as well as if there are more students that we think have more needs around recess and all the rest. You know, there are recommendations that are brought to us by the principals and Special Ed about, you know, the amount of coverage we need. So that was about another forty thousand or so, and that could rise throughout, depending as the year goes. We'll see if there's going to be any additional monitors needed there. We did need one additional teacher assistant, very similar to one-to-one aide, it was just had in this, this scenario, there was a, oh, actually, this was not necessarily for a student, but it was due to the fact that they were running a, with the number of children in different classes in the high school, some of the ICT classes, where they needed to have additional support in there. They were having a really difficult time with some of the higher level science classes. So this was something that was based upon student need. The reason that sometimes you'll see different numbers, again, is this is based on the individual, and the person doesn't need benefits, health benefits, so sometimes when. when younger folks, you know, come in, they're not in need of benefits. So that's why, and that's a prorated number. Again, we've been speaking a lot about the increase of ENL students. I think even we were doing a reporting the other day, Melissa, right, and we went up, I think, 12 or 13 students one year. And again, for our population, that's a significant increase. It was over 25 or 30. I mean, it was maybe even higher than, I'm trying to think of what the base number was. But again, the resulting hires for that, it's about a 1.8 additional teachers, so more or less two teachers.
A lot of that was also driven by the needs of the ENL students?
Yes.
So even not so much the numbers, but the amount of servicing.
Right. Yes. Thank you for that. And again, similarly, we, after the budget was set, there was a need to hire, add an additional special education teacher. You'll see the cost of that. That hire was done, I think, in the summertime. And then we came into the school year, and they then, with some new students that came in, they needed to add another 0.8. And that's actually existing staff members who all picked up like a 0.2. That was to open up two additional resource rooms because the resource rooms are capped at five and they needed, you know, additional students had that need. So you'll see that was $88,000. Again, similarly, over the summer, we had some students coming in with very highly specialized nursing needs, medical needs, that required us to increase nursing services. And again, this number is still, this is like an anticipated number and that actually could be higher. The other thing we are grappling with is with so many students with medical needs, there's now a need, any school trip. It's very difficult even to find nurses, quite frankly, to send on them, but it's quite expensive as well. So we're trying to encourage some parents, if possible, to come, you know, with their child, if possible, because if not, we are sending medical staff on trips. And in addition to then needing to increase nursing services in the building. And it's, yes.
Are these staff also going to weekend games?
Yes. So, yes. So that, yeah, so that's something that's been new for us, too. We have a number of students who, based on their medical plans, and this is something that's reviewed by a doctor. And even if the parent says, no, it's okay, we're required to have nursing staff there. So we've had, it's about 20 hours of overtime a week that for, and again, that's just, you know, for one, it's sometimes it's for two students because there's a few different students that need. And that is six days a week at times. So, you know, it's significant. So this number may actually, depending on if these students do anything else throughout the year, I'm not sure what the plans are. But this is just really for the full, you know, with the increase there. So again, different diverse needs of students that include medical. They're in the process of hiring at least a 0.5 FTs for speech and language. And that, again, could go up based upon, as students are being evaluated right through MTSS and may then receive, if they can't be worked into the groups, that may need to increase. But that's really just to get us to what we have mandated services. As we develop the schedule this year, they, in order to make the schedule work, the music department came that they need an additional 0.2 FTE. This, that amount reflects the amount of money that the person who picked up that additional assignment receives for that extra class. Similarly, it's a smaller amount, but 0.14 additional needed for science. And that's typically for a lab, a lab assignment. They're just a little bit over contract. That was another 19,000. Security has been something that even with our current number of security staff, we did have to add one. And a lot of it has to do with just trying to manage the flow of this building and different needs that were going on in middle school and high school to necessitate that recommendation. And that, right now, is where we are. And there is some, was somewhat of a plan on the table to also increase that number a bit more to help the high school with their security needs and oversight. And then again, this was very early on at the beginning of the year. We did have a significant repair to the Burke Estate. And that repair cost us about $350,000. That was all due to water damage and things that are not covered by insurance and need to be repaired because they were not only a hazard, but they were impacting the environment beneath that and actually putting water, it wasn't draining correctly into the, where it needs to go either. And then we are also, as part of the work we're doing toward this bond, we're understanding that now with some of the things that are proposed, we need additional services to ensure that we're able to really understand bringing this bond to the community. So we anticipate, and some of that is also due to like the emergency repairs and other things that we've had to have architects help us with current problems. So we anticipate about another $125,000 worth of professional services there. So again, this is, it does happen throughout the year. Similarly, when we were contemplating in the fifth grade section, when you set a budget, we, there's a little bit of contingency, not so much as just, you know, we tried to build it with a little bit of understanding things could shift a bit, but, you know, not typically this much. I mean, and then things can go in either direction. So as I said last year, when the orders said the report, we had a very good year. There were things in which we anticipated that either we didn't have to pay for, you know, less buses or whatever the case may be. Sometimes we think we may need X amount of aides. And then in fact, when the students have their meetings, they're in fact reduced. So sometimes that can happen also. We just found ourselves on the opposite end. And that's why I said during the order report, it's great that that happened because we're already going in the opposite direction in this fiscal year. But just to kind of give you some sense, so, and this is just a few examples, how do we address when we have these kind of unforeseen budget additions? So, you know, just kind of try to give a quick bulleted list of some areas in which we're seeing, and this is now looking at total salaries. So by looking at what we anticipate, so leave replacements, that means when people have our medical leaves, they're paid. And then, of course, the person who comes in to do their assignment is paid. And depending on a given year, that those leave replacements can range from 200 to 600 or 700,000 in costs. This year, we budgeted 200 thus far. We only have one person's going to be out that we know of. And typically, at this time, we have somewhat of an idea of, and many times they're for either childbirth and, you know, things of that nature. I mean, we could certainly have people out. But right now, it appears that we'll have some budgetary savings there. Salary advancements, that means that, and you'll be approving those at the next board meeting. Teachers, in addition to the contract, could advance across the columns. And we don't necessarily, when we're developing our budget, we have, we try to base it on the prior year advancements and, you know, guesstimate what we think that'll be. They've come in a little bit lower than we had built in, you know, not because we don't know that until it's submitted, which is after the budget process. And then other, you know, items is listed here. So, you know, just different numbers, retirement actuals and things like that. And that's kind of going across a number of categories. Again, not big numbers. It's not, typically, we would even have a little bit more contingencies available to us at this time of year. But we, you know, again, we've had some, a significant amount of hires that we've had to do over in the early part of this year. So you'll kind of just see though where we're kind of trending in the other direction. And that's how we're able through, and we will be in the next week or so, bringing some of those budget amendments to say, okay, we know we have some savings in health insurance. We need to move that money now to the salary to cover these additional teachers that we had to hire and things like that. And then again, if in fact, we find ourselves, if there's, if we continue to say other things pop up that are beyond what we think we can handle with those other savings that we can find in other parts of the budget, there may then be a need to pull money out of our appropriate, unappropriate fund balance. And that's that 4% number. That's not, not in reserve for any particular reason. But at times when districts, I mean, I don't, I'm not suggesting we have to go there yet. But if we had a complete budget shortfall, we might have to say, okay, we need to take 300,000 out of that account. But that's, I just wanted to list it here as, that's when districts have, if you don't have money like that, that's when you start saying, we're not having sports in this. You know, that's what happens. We're not in that position. Like we would then, if we became that short, which I'm not saying we will be, we would always have the ability to pull a few dollars out of there. And then the other, the other side of the ledger is that our revenues are coming in a bit higher, right? So we're seeing a bit higher revenue. So even if we were running above on our expenditure lines, like that revenue is an offset to that. But it's important because we will have to make budget amendments because we can't have codes that are running in the red in our budget, like throughout the year. We will then have to come and make those budget transfers to cover appropriately where those expenses are. So the next slide, sorry. Okay. So the reason it's not only important, so that's how we're going to handle it this year. But as I've, you know, when we talk in the leadership group, those things now are why I've been spending a lot of time the last few days prioritizing, looking at the budget for next year. Because when you already have an increase, these are not one-off expenses, except for the field, of course. You know, that's a repair and it's done. These are now recurring expenses. So as an example, our tax cap, if it were just to be the 2% on the levy, would allow us to levy another $900,000 over this current year's budget. As you can see with these expenses, we've exceeded that with just what we've added this year, which would mean no other line could change in our budget. So that's obviously not ideal. And coupled with the fact that there's already early indication, which we knew from last year, that they were going to review the foundation aid because last year, the governor had wanted, we would have had a reduction in aid. And then on the final budget deliberation, she agreed to put off those changes until there was this study done and all the rest. But there was a meeting, and I have slides from that meeting with the state comptroller's office, and the state is running at a $2.4 billion deficit this year. So that means that they're, I mean, not definitely, they are, early indications are to like, not anticipate more state aid, potentially, you know, anticipate some reduction in state aid. So I, this slide kind of says that as now, we kind of have this year covered because we had some, but now looking into next year, we're, you know, really now behind the eight ball with assuming that those expenses will be continuing. And then also, this year, we used $554,000 of last year's savings as a revenue plug. So that would not be possible. So that's another, that's a revenue that has to be made up. So that would mean that that arguably would have to be added to the tax levy, too, to like balance the budget. So that, that's where like, I'm not that concerned about this year. I'm always concerned about like that, those, you know, later years. But again, there are things that change and that's I worry and nobody else needs to. But, you know, things are fluid. So things, and Bill worries. But that being said, you know, we do have some retirements coming up and we'll be evaluating things. But again, this was probably one of the more significant years and where we saw a lot of shifts over the summer that required some attention.
So what we wanted to do, and Maureen and I talked about this, this really today, was put down on paper, because this is one of your major responsibilities as a board, is the oversight of the district financially. But this, this will be another one of those themes. We're going to keep coming back to and updating you. And I'd rather have this listed here very clearly and definitely as to what's here, what's driving these, and then that we are, you know, looking down the road already. So, all right?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. Very thorough. Any questions or comments about it before we move on?
I just had a quick question about the first slide where, how would you, would you normally ask the existing staff if you could, if you had room to kind of absorb, like the 0.2 times four different positions, I think it was? Is that sort of the practice? If they have free time?
Well, what it is, is in the contract, in the teacher's contract, there's a provision where, and it's really just for the 712 teachers, and that includes special education, 712, that the, first, if the district exhausts, we have to go out and do a search for, to fill the position. And occasionally, if it's a full-time position, they want, because they feel as though, there's kind of like, they allow it, but they, with like some guardrails on it. Because I think the thinking is that then teachers become overloaded because then they're unable to do their prep for their, I mean, they get paid for it. But I think a lot of the thinking around it from the teacher's perspective, but the union is that they don't think it's best practice to do it, although their members are compensated, you know, because they think it may, you know, take away from, or be difficult to do that, you know, for a long period of time. So the language in the contract allows us to do it. First, we post for the position, God bless you. And then after, if we're unable to find it now with the special education, I can speak, the few ways that we've done that here, that one was the, it wasn't the need of like one person. It was like, sometimes it was like 0.2. That would be happening at the same time. So you wouldn't be, we would have had to hire like four people, 0.2, which would never happen. So that one was kind of a natural to say, like, we're unable to fill this this way. And so they agreed to. And a lot of it was like resource rooms and a bit different. So I think that one, we did appoint for the full year. And then the reason with the music, if you're a chairperson, so in the contract, it says that if a teacher has to teach six sections, so chairpeople only teach four sections. They have one less class. So the individual doing this is the chairperson. So like even contractually, he's allowed to pick it up. So I say that to say like, we can't just do it like if we wanted to, nor could the teachers voluntarily do. We have to work within the way the contract is written. So at times it is, there are times it is better because then you're not adding another benefit package and all the rest from like a financial perspective. But we typically, it's, we do it because we can't find anybody. And I think we're also looking at potentially needing to do that with some of the ENL possibly, too, because we're unable to find.
They're posted multiple times.
Yeah. For a short term, though, and I think we have a person that could possibly pick it up in like two months. But in the short term, we may have to like do those additional 0.2s.
Okay. So it's like a temporary measure?
Yes, yes. And if they're not in the 7 to 12, when it's below that, they're not even, we have to do an additional sign letter to allow it. So like, an elementary school teacher could not pick up, say, if they were a reading teacher, they could not pick up an additional assignment because it's specifically for 712 teachers. And then, and I guess special education because that, those teachers, they're special K-12, but these teachers are teaching at the 712. So it really is very, you know, yes, that's the word. Sometimes I have a hard time to remember. Yes. And then, and then, of course, anyone, the chairpeople, because they, they're not teaching five.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. I'm going to open for public comment. Thank you all for being patient. I guess everybody signed in. Is that right?
I'm sorry. I'm forgetting people there for a second.
Yeah, you can set up like, the mic should work. Let's see, give it a tap.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Hi.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Maria Grisepha. I'm very glad to be here tonight. The three of you in the front row have been sitting.
Your address, can you give us your address?
Yes, Maria Grisepha, 73 Villard Avenue, Pastings. We're the climbing dome on Villard Ave. If you're driving up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My three-year-old is hanging upside down off of it. I've been sitting opposite the three of you, yawning wildly for the last whole time because my three-year-old is going through it. I don't mean to appear disengaged, but she's going through it. So we're all going through it at 4:30 in the morning. I am here with notes because since I can't think straight anymore. Thank you, three-year-old Catherine. I have questions about the professional learning for Hillside ELA. I understand that there is an RPF that's been put out a few times. And I wholeheartedly believe that the RPF is being put out with Good Faith. But I, it is very curious and concerning that embedded in the RPF link, it already says Gravity Goldberg in it. And I understand that is the consultant group that's been used for Hillside PD for many years. But I don't believe that a Good Faith RFP is really meant to be a foregone conclusion that it's going with the people we've always gone before. So I don't think anyone realized it was already embedded. And I hope that's not sort of peeling the curtain back into any unintended plans. I am hoping very much that the RPF will attract a number of vendors because Gravity Goldberg has been with Hillside for many years. They do come from, the founder is from Teachers College, incidentally, as am I, but completely unrelated to education. I have the only master's of education where I can do nothing in a classroom. I am a psychotherapist. So my master's of education, great. The Teachers College dissolved their reading and writing program. And Gravity Goldberg is loosely offshoot, there's a large connection, for lack of better words. So I can appreciate that there's a good longstanding, amiable relationship, but I'm hoping for a more diverse professional development consultant, one more aligned with the science of reading. There's a lot of discussion, the kindergarten orientation, for example, I attended with my kindergartner, a lot of discussion about science of reading increasing in the classroom with our blended curriculum. And it would be nice if science of reading was a greater focus within the professional learning. My middle child is in kindergarten. My middle child is in kindergarten and my oldest child is in second grade. So now I have four classrooms between the last three years where I have a very clear view into literacy education within those classrooms. And so for that reason, I'm hoping very much that you will be looking for people in addition to Gravity Goldberg. I, I've never been here before, so I don't know if I just say goodbye and thank you, or do you have any questions about why I raised this?
It's a public comment, we listen, the board listens, but it's not a...
Right, right, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Bobby Gentman, 3 Bevill Street. I just wanted to give a student's perspective on cell phones. I think, I actually agree on no cell phones during class time. And I don't think that teachers and substitutes are doing enough to enforce those rules. I see students on their phones without, like the teachers don't check at the start of class, and I think that's a big problem. I think students are more engaged when cell phones are put away for the class time. I don't think they should be banned entirely, but I think a healthy use of cell phones in schools and in life is important. Like that seminar we had recently, I found that was very engaging and very informative. But I think an outright ban would be harmful for when students leave high school.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Thank you both, appreciate it. Moving on to business items, are there any questions or comments regarding business items one through 16?
I have a few. I have to look at my notes, so bear with me here. So I think the first one was actually regarding item number two, and I was just curious as to why the, why we were seeking to have somebody who was previously leading the class provide the professional development for the class rather than the current instructor for that class?
So there, there's some thinking around transition plan that is in addition to our current faculty. So there's a level of expertise and we felt that there was the most supportive opportunity for this particular partnership. And in addition, we have, you know, in, in thinking about Maria's preparation to teach SUPA, it's multi-pronged. So she will be doing some internal observations, she will also need some like direct outside of this learning environment, professional learning and coaching essentially. And then we're also arranging for her to go see SUPA elsewhere. So we're doing some cross-pollination, also not just, not just English, but also social studies. She's seeing different kinds of things happening and this is one part of a multi-prong, multi-prong approach.
But, and I understand that for the, the additional time, I'm just curious, is there actual like fostering of the relationship between the person who currently teaches that class and who has taught it for the last few years? You know, is there a relationship there since they're already within the same department in addition to the fact that she's seeking out somebody who was previously ran that same class for a decade? I'm just kind of curious as to the origins of that.
Yeah, so there, there are collegial opportunities because they're both teaching within the same department. We were thinking that it was also important to have additional coaching and guidance like beyond the school day to be able to do that.
Okay.
But we're also leveraging internal people that are involved in SUPA as well.
Okay. Just had to answer a question. On number five, I had a question about the auditor's report and the fact that it had a particular kind of flag that the auditors had identified an area that was not, had not yet been reviewed. And so I was kind of interested in kind of finding out what that actually means of like the verbiage is like to identify potential weaknesses and they're specifically talking about the E and L and other initiatives. What is that?
So, so just, so the last meeting, you know, we had our external auditors and largely, although they do a lot of testing and they do a lot, they do their own risk assessment as well, it's, it's to ensure that the financial statements and all of that is in line and, and can be, they can certify that our financials are good representation. So, but then the internal auditors, they do a more of an operational deep dive on things. So although they do testing in all the areas, whether it be payables and all the rest, they're really looking at policies and guidelines and looking at, at, you know, are those things being implemented and are they, you know, so anything, it could be anything that's operational. So interestingly enough, I mean, they did a very exhaustive, because the, the risk assessment, like the original baseline one gets kind of updated each year, they almost did one from like scratch because so many things had like changed in the district and all the rest. And, you know, they, they meet with all the department leaders and all the rest and, and including anyone on the organizational chart, I mean, they, I don't know, they probably speak to 30 people internally. And then it was interesting because they have at, at different times looked at either, it could be fixed assets or other areas and, and they, even sometimes I've seen where audits are now done on student attendance. So they're getting further because there's so much auditing and testing that's done of like, you could only test the payable so often, you know? Now they're saying, as schools spend money or organizations spend money, and are those things then in align with board policy and regulation and all the rest? And I think what they were, not so much is, they, they look at it, I guess, as there's some inherent risk that they've found in other places as well, it's not necessarily focused on here, but then looking at diversity and things of that and is there a common understanding of what the, the practices across the board? And I think when they, they have, they speak to a number of people, chairpeople and departments and principals and all the rest, and I think as they went through their assessment, they found as there was an area where there wasn't a lot of cohesive and alignment, or just things that they felt as though they didn't, they felt as though it needed to, to be, to have a more extensive area of review to, and it really is to help, help us do things better or where we can improve and align things in a better way, whether it be from the governance standpoint and all the rest. So I've seen these things and I think they're actually very effective and helpful because I've, they've done, we've had internal audits since they've got into practice, which is probably 15 years. So we've done, you know, technology, HR, payroll, fix assets and all the rest, but they are, a lot of districts feel that it is really important to lever, not, we didn't, we don't direct them to where they go, they do their own risk assessment and they assign risk, we have nothing to do with that. But interestingly enough, a lot of districts are now finding areas like that, that are important to have this like external review done and then help us align with our policies and procedures and ensure...
I guess my question is kind of like, what is a concrete example of an identified weakness or efficiency, when they use that terminology? Because it seems kind of vague.
I think it would be, is the effectiveness of oversight, the effectiveness of coordination, the effectiveness of relationships amongst the buildings on this topic as it relates to staffing and all the rest. They had identified several areas of high risk and as we talked about it, we thought this was one as we go in on, it's going to dovetail well with the tri-state review, more, a little more of a critical friend structure that we'll be introducing a little more to the board. We haven't set the date on that, but I think in November, we'll give an update on cultural competency work there. So we thought this was actually a valuable one too.
Yeah, and they also had done the other air, the high-risk areas in the last two years. So it was like, you know, it kind of...
So we were kind of left with this on the list. But, so it's definitely Hastings-specific, but context matters and I think in a lot of places, there's some concerns with the quality and commitment to programs such as this. So I don't know if that helps.
No, that's helpful. And then I just had one last question, and that was actually pertinent to one of the public comments that was raised, and that was business item number 15. And it was indicated that it was recommended that the proposals received would be rejected. And so I just wanted to have...
So that was simply, we had issued a lot of RFPs and that was one of them. And I think when the RFPs came in, they weren't, they weren't reviewed on a timely basis, so I had to reject them and rebid it. Really, that's what happened. So I actually had said to Melissa, I'm like, oh my gosh, did you guys, did I get those too? Because there was, we had done a number of them in the same week and the actual proposals that were sealed never got to them in a timely manner. So we had to reject them and just go back out. That was just simply for this thing.
It's more a timeliness thing.
For us, for me it was, so I, I was like, wait, did we award that? Because we had done like resorted practice, we had done a bunch, like even for all of our, like electric and all the, all those, we kind of issue the same time of year. And when we were going through what needed to be awarded or not awarded, I was like, oh, where's the recommendation? And they were like, oh, well, like, either they never got them all together. So I said, okay, we'll reject it, but now let's go back out. So it, it just simply you have to reject it and then repost it in the newspaper. So they're due this week, is it tomorrow? They're, so they're, they're going to open them, we, we have some sealed bids and some have come in.
Okay, I was just, without the explanation, I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, no, I know, and I actually should have done that, yes.
That's, that's why we asked the question.
Yeah, I said it was good because it did go with the comment tonight.
Thank you, Sylvia.
So I, I just want to go back to Maureen, to number one on the business items and say that I love the idea of girls having flag, playing flag football.
Yeah, isn't it great?
And you know that I've always proposed that everybody should be playing flag football.
Yes, that is true.
Including co-ed flag football, which...
I was quarterback on, I was quarterback on my college team, actually.
Oh, yeah?
My son played all three in college, flag, never football here.
So much fun. So much fun. It's funny, it's nice, it's nice.
That's all my questions, I'm not going to ask any more.
No, it's fine. Any other questions, comments, business items one through 16? Yep. Is there a motion to approve business items one through 16?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to placement services for CSE and CPSE. Are there any questions or comments regarding our services and placements for CSE and CPSE? Is there a motion to approve our placement and services for CSE and CPSE?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to consideration of our salary increase for the assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction position. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our salary increase for the assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction position?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to personnel as a consent agenda, are there any questions or comments regarding our appointments, our leaves of absence, or our amendments? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, these would have been from the October 8th meeting. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the October 8th meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to second public comment, in the case that anybody would like to. Okay. Agenda review, so looking ahead to November 6th, that's our next meeting, we already spoke about, we're going to have the land presentation on the, on the fields.
You'll also have the BOC's leadership here, they promised they'll keep brief, keep brief, there's good English, huh? They'll keep this efficient, we'll see, that's the aim. But they are at the point on a number of the things that have prompted a lot of questions across the state, meaning are BOC's, the 37 of them in the state, are on the point on the regionalism question and things like that? But they've asked for this time with you.
Oh, that'd be interesting.
Is that what they're presenting then?
No, well, they may come up brief, it's such a big, complex topic, but I, I, I think one, the larger relationship we have with BOC's, that it's a significant part of our budget to them, I think they want to speak to that. So they're going around to all of their member districts to present to the boards.
Okay, that'll be interesting.
And then if you look out, you can get some, so that'll be a full meeting for you, then we can see, you can see we're busy for a lot of the upcoming meetings because we start to get into budget season, in addition to keeping the bond discussion going.
Yeah, it's a lot. Thank you. I'm going to open up for our board comments.
Catherine? I have a comment for myself, and then I also have a comment that Teresa texted to me that I promised I'd read on her behalf because she can't make it tonight. Trustee McGaffey.
Board member Teresa, right.
Sorry, trustee McGaffey. I was just going to say that I wanted to speak to the community and that I had received a lot of emails from parents, a lot of conversations at soccer games and field hockey games and softball games about the parent-teacher conferences and just that the board had heard these comments, these comments and the concerns about family, school, community relationships and partnerships, and it's something that we're taking into consideration and that we're, we're thinking about as well. And then I just wanted to, that's me, I'm done.
I would say taking seriously.
Taking seriously, yes. We take it very seriously, thank you. And then trustee McGaffey, I'll pause and pivot, she just wanted to share that she has two middle school children, one who struggles and one who doesn't on paper. And she said she often hears about the one who struggles, but she never hears about the other, and that parent-teacher conference is one of those special places where she gets to hear that happen, so she just wants to strengthen her support for that. And she also wanted to say that the policy to have parent-teacher conferences in the evening is really important for parents who are working. It also does understand and hear what our leaders are saying about redoing and reviewing parent-teacher conferences to make them as effective as possible.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other board comments? No? Okay.
May I?
Yes, of course.
May I blend in here? I'm not a board member, but I've received a lot of emails too around the parent-teacher conference and I, and this isn't a public meeting, it gets in recording, not a lot of people here, but I'm assuming a lot of people are listening. The buck stops with the superintendent, so very much my awareness, going back to last year of the observations that a five-minute speed discussion about the nature of your child is insufficient. Andy Kleiman has arrived and said a five-minute discussion at the high school is insufficient. He is listening, looking around, starting probably in the winter and the spring, will start conversations early with families. Last year, Scott Winn did talk with the PTSA about his concerns about the effectiveness of the current system. While some families have written in very thoughtfully and constructively saying, why did you change something that was working? Bill Mcursie speaking, with all due respect, it was not working. The access in was inconsistent. An average middle school teacher has 125 students. An average specials teacher has over 400 students. We were overloaded with the LA demand, we were overloaded with math demand. Meanwhile, a lot of teachers had nobody asking to see them. The parent, the teacher conference at evenings is a real option and we are looking hard at going back to that as a sort of stopgap for this year. And, but we have to be consistent, K-12 and that, so that's why use first names, Andy, Scott and Amy are talking about that, to be consistent. But the fundamental here is we want more parent interaction with our teachers, want more quality interaction with our teachers. That's what Scott Winn witnessed last year to say, you're not getting it. A lot of families wanted a chance to get in and have the meeting, couldn't. So November 1, that day, there's no way 500-plus family, parents of the students could get in. So we already had immense insufficiency and lack of supply relative to the demand, so trying to find a way to work with that. I think going forward, how we kind of share early ideas, we'll share them even earlier, we'll share them that much more frequently. But I think, and then at the high school, fair warning, we want to find a better way and the fundamental here, remember this, we want more, better quality interactions between our families and our students. And if families are reaching out to teachers and it's not getting anywhere, please remember the who to call when. If you're not getting there with your particular teacher, please reach out to your assistant principal who's now there. So Scott has a colleague, reach out to Scott. If it's the high school, reach out to Melissa Hardesty, Soon Tara Ware, reach out to Andy Kleiman. We want to make sure those interactions are happening. Within the middle school, every five weeks, you are supposed to hear from your teacher. Every five weeks, you are supposed to hear from your teacher. If that's not happening, and then every 10 weeks, there's a report card of some type. So if those, we want to get those systems in place in a way that encourages the interactions. But again, the basic math here is, is highly problematic. We come out of the elementary school, it's about 1 to 20 ratio, 1 to 25 ratio, suddenly it's a 1 to 125 ratio. So the comments in from the families have been very, very helpful, I've seen them all. Scott has written back to nearly every single one of those parents to kind of clarify. But again, the commitment is to take a system that was really not working well for a lot of people and then see how we can get it better. And, and we're committed to that and we, we will get there and we're listening and paying attention. But at, at the end of the day, I own this and I own us getting better on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mcursie.
I know the next time that we meet, well, I know this not, this is not a platform for politics, but I also know that the next time we meet will be after Election Day. And I hope that everyone in this community votes, however you're going to choose to vote, just, that's one important right that we all still have.
That said, as we sit here and talk about everything, and my mind goes, I can't help